Okay, we're ready here. We'll start the June WMO meeting. For the call to order, is that, is that just me calling it to order, or do we need to take attendance or anything?
Uh, no, that's just you calling it to order.
Okay, very good. And we will start with, uh, looks like everything's, uh, information tonight. For new business, uh, first would be the 2024 annual report.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. Um, there is a link in the packet, so Ryan, if you just want to click on that link and open it up, and then we can take turns just doing our highlights. We're just gonna point out one or two highlights from the annual report. Everyone, um, was mailed a hard copy of the annual report, so hopefully you had time to review that. Is the link not working?
I was just gonna ask, is it not, sometimes when you open up a new link, it's not showing. So now that you said that, let me know if you see it now.
Yep. Uh, maybe, can you make the screen a little bit bigger and close out the sidebar there?
Let me, I can zoom in a bit. Uh, I don't know about the sidebar. Oh, there we go. You let me know what page is you want to go to, Melissa.
Um, I wanted to talk about, um, the lake water quality, but let's just slowly
Oh, sure.
These first couple pages, we can just go through those really quickly. Um, oh, one thing I wanted to point out, education outreach probably on the next page, I think, is right here. So I just wanted to point out that, um, for the workshops in 2024, there was a great response to the prescribed burn workshops of sixty-five people signed up for that. So I thought that that was really amazing. I don't know that we've ever had that many people sign up for one workshop, um, in a year. So I just wanted to point that out. And then you can keep going to whatever. I think the CIPs are next for you, if that's what you were gonna highlight.
So yeah, the, the CIPs that we're highlighting, we actually talked about two because with, um, them being winter projects, you, it kind of carries over into, um, two years. So we talked about last year's, uh, stream bank stabilization project, um, where it was on Sand Creek, um, and kind of highlighted that. Fight and company had that, that project that they completed for us, um, giving all the kind of numbers associated with it in terms of, um, environmental benefits and costs of the project as well. And then also talking about the start of the CIP that we're, then we're recently talking about that's on Pika Creek. So, um, that's the ravine stabilization that, um, that Fight also won the bid on that as well, and it basically gives the benefits and, and numbers for that project too. And then here's just pictures of the sites, um, beforehand, and then some during construction. Um, highlighting a, another stream bank stabilization project. So this is actually, um, one that we completed, uh, with the Sullen Waters help. Um, so kind of on that same theme of another, another stream bank project on Sand Creek. Um, so just once again, giving kind of the numbers of who paid for what, and how much benefit, um, environmental benefits that we received on it, and then just some pictures of, of the project, uh, before, and then during, and, and then after construction of that. Uh, I think we can scroll through these. No- nothing of, of real note with those.
You can keep scrolling.
Okay. You tell me when to stop.
Uh, as soon as you see the water quality graphs for the lakes.
Yeah.
Next page, right here. Okay. Um, just wanted to point out a couple of things on these graphs that we see. Um, just getting to my notes here. So with Cedar, um, it's kind of hard to tell. I didn't put a trend line on here, but this brown line is the total phosphorus measurements. And if I were to put a trend line on here, you can see, um, phosphorus over the years has really, uh, on a decreasing trend, which is really good for Cedar Lake. Um, I did, uh, have some comments from the, uh, Lake Improvement District Board this year. Again, that early May, the water clarity was amazing on Cedar. So we're starting to see, at least in the spring, some improvements with that. Um, wanna scroll to the next, right there. So Odowd, um, Odowd.
Sorry, Melissa, this is Joe Barton. Um, what are we all attributing that, at Cedar Lake to?
Um, well, what we've been doing on Cedar Lake is really, uh, tackling the curly leaf with whole lake treatments. So the last three years, we've been putting in a herbicide called Floradone and putting it in very, very early in the season. So by the time May hits, um, the curly leaf is pretty much dying off or, or dead or very affected. Um, so we think that that's part of the reason, um, you know, I have heard from the, the board that there are a few more wakeboard boards on there. So there's definitely a lot of activity on Cedar Lake, but at least in the early spring, we're seeing really good, really good water clarity.
Okay. And are there any other projects planned on Cedar?
Um, not yet. Uh, we are having discussions, which I'm gonna talk about in one of my updates. Um, we are planning some new strategies to help improve water, uh, quality on Cedar Lake. Um, so I've been working with some vendors, and we're having a big open house in July, but, um, I'll be talking about that in my updates.
Sounds good, thank you.
Um, so with Odowd, we're not really seeing any trend. Um, it's still not, you know, it's not on the impaired waters list. It's still got really good water quality. Um, just nothing really trending on that lake for 2024. Uh, McMahon. Um, we are seeing, at least since the drought years, um, total phosphorus and chlorophyll A have dropped, which is good. Uh, McMahon is still not on the impaired waters list either, and we're trying to keep it that way. Um, so it, you know, the, the drought years, the three years of drought with the water level dropping and McMahon, there was still a lot of, uh, boating activity on there because we know that from the watercraft inspection report. Um, but with water levels a little bit back up, the good thing is, is the phosphorus and chlorophyll A are dropping again. So um, and with Thol, Thol would be the last one. Thol is on a improving trend as well for phosphorus, as, as you can see with that brown line, at least since the early eighties, since we've been monitoring it. Um, but, uh, you know, last year, the watercraft inspection report showed a lot more activity of boaters on Thol Lake. I'm not sure why last year was a big year for Thol, but as you can see, that did kind of reflect in the, in the water quality monitoring of kind of spiking on total phosphorus and chlorophyll A. So, and that's all I had, but I wanted to just highlight for you. Uh, one last thing, I can quickly talk about the Sand Creek monitoring, if you just want to scroll to the next page. In 2024, this was a big endeavor, um, on our part to collect water quality data on the whole Sand Creek watershed. If you scroll just a little bit further to show the map of the extent of all the, just a little bit further down to show, oh, no, 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 nine, two, five. I just wanted to show the monitoring locations in Rice and Lister County as well. So um, our SWCD took on this big endeavor for us in 2024 and monitored all those sites, uh, last year. So all of that data is in bars, in bars hands. They are working on that data analysis, and I should have a report before the end of this year to show you. So this is also to inform this next plan update. And that would be all for me. With this.
Commissioner, I didn't have anything else to highlight as well for the rest of the report, unless there are any questions that any commissioners have.
Did anyone have any questions about the report?
Okay, uh, hearing none, I guess next would be the tax application for shoreline restoration. Ryan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, good afternoon. So you'll notice that this is a information item, and it's not an action item. Uh, so just want to make sure to clarify that, and I'll explain why that's the case here. Um, so this is a project, uh, actually related to Commissioner Barton asking if there's any projects on Cedar Lake. Well, here would be an example of, of one, uh, cost share project at least that we're, uh, working on. Um, so this is a, uh, shoreline restoration along Cedar Lake. That's a little unique in, in that it's actually two different landowners that are working together on this project, uh, Nathan Zollner and Julie Miller. Uh, so the total length between their two properties is a hundred and sixty-three feet. Um, what makes this project a little bit unique into why we needed to move so quickly on it is that we are utilizing multiple grant sources for this project. We're actually using the remaining funds of our, both our EPA and our WBIF grant. Um, and if you recall, the reason why we had to move so quickly is the EPA grant is ending here soon. Uh, so the actual expiration date of the EPA grant is August thirty-first of this year. Uh, but our report is due thirty days prior to that, so July thirty-first, and then all the payments and everything. So we've kind of got a self-imposed deadline of June thirtieth. Um, and so this project is a bit larger scale. If you notice, the estimated cost is forty-five thousand, uh, plus. Um, so it's just, there's a decent amount of, uh, earthwork of pulling the banks back, and they just needed as much time as possible to get out there and start to do that work, and hence, that's why it's, it's information, um, to you. So just kind of going over the information here, it was, uh, forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars in the total. The EPA grant, um, we were encumbering ten thousand, twenty-four dollars. The WBIF grant was nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Local general funds, um, would be then twenty-one thousand, forty-seven dollars, uh, which then the balance would be forty, uh, five hundred and sixty-three dollars from the landowners. This project was actually targeted by staff, so our EPA grant had Cedar Lake watershed as the watershed we were focusing on. There was three different watersheds. Cedar Lake was one of them. And we had a decent amount of money that was still in that pot. So that's why we were out, the staff from Sullen Water out there targeting projects on Cedar Lake, and this was one of them that, uh, came from that effort. Um, and why it's here at the docket is because the benefits aren't super great on the project. However, I say that with the caveat that what we try to utilize, um, grants for is, there's a certain bar that you have to hit, um, uh, numeric value that we promised we would hit from a sediment and phosphorus standpoint savings. But once you get above that bar, you know, you, you can then start to fund maybe some projects that aren't as good. And so early on in grants, um, you're, you're, I don't want to necessarily cherry picking, but you're trying to pick projects that have higher benefits because you promised those, those goals. And with the hopes that on the backend, maybe it's not as critical. And so this is a, a prime example of how you kind of want it to work out, where we had a, a fairly expensive project come in, and instead of using all our local dollars, uh, to fund it, we can actually use these grants to kind of help offset our costs. So it's sort of that benefit to us. Um, so the docket requires projects that exceed a hundred and seventy pounds of phosphorus and sediment, and tons of sediment per year to go through the screening committee process. It exceeded both of those thresholds. Uh, this one did go to the SWCD, June eighteenth board meeting. Was recommended for approval, and then because the grant was expiring, we needed to move as quickly as possible. And so Vanessa administratively approved it uh, last week to allow the contractor to get out there and start work on the project. So um, kind of a lot of information to pass along for this project, but just kind of wanted to share that with the group and see if there was any questions.
Thanks, Ryan. It's Joe Barton. Um, just curious, is it, is the plan to just do primarily rock? Will there be any native vegetation above the rock, or what does the overall stabilization process look like?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Barton, uh, great question. So there is rock at the toe, uh, because of the wave action that's happening with this, um, uh, particular site. But then what they're gonna do is pull back the, you know, the, the slope is, is near vertical, um, above the toe of that water and ground interface. So kind of that rock is at that waterline, helping with the wave action. They'll pull the banks back and then actually put all of that into, uh, native vegetation, and then there would even be then a buffer up on that upper end of native vegetation too. Um, just sort of, you know, the, the rocks helping with that erosion, but then, you know, the long-term solution is that, that vegetation kind of establishing and holding that, that bank together.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, here, and you can see the current site, so you, maybe not vertical, but you know, close to.
Yeah, yeah, that's a pretty steep slope, probably eight, nine feet, ten feet at the highest.
Okay, any other questions? If not, uh, next would be the WMP goal summary. Melissa?
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Um, so in your packet, I put together a memo, um, of all of the input from that joint, uh, meeting with the SWCD board on, um, what everyone came up with, with a measurable, measurable goal tasks. Um, so what I did is I took all the input and I started to kind of combine like, uh, like comments or like ideas, just so that you didn't have a whole list of every single one that was mentioned. Um, and so I tried to condense it that way. Um, so I just put those into a memo as a summary for you to show you all the input. Um, and, yeah, if you just want to scroll down. So we will use these to consider when we start uh, figuring out our prioritization and, and, um, kind of finally settle on a final draft of goals, but I also included the, the technical assistance or technical advisory committee input as well in that summary in there too. And so if you were to go through those and kind of do some comparison, there was at least one, um, in kind of each goal of kind of the same input from each different meeting. Um, so the, the good thing is, is we're finding some commonalities in both of your exercises together. Um, but I just wanted to present this to you so you can see all the results. We will revisit these once we, um, get back to talking about the goals. Um, does anybody have any questions on these at the moment?
Commissioner Barton, sorry. So just to clarify, so this is a brainstorming session. So staff will take these, all the results of this brainstorming session, it still may be condensed, and, um, then it'll come back somewhat more succinctly and officially to, to us for more feedback. Is that kind of the thought? You're not so much looking for feedback directly on this? Maybe more so the next time we see this in a more condensed form?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So today I'm going to, the next thing I'm gonna introduce is kind of prioritization. Um, next month we'll come back with, um, kind of looking a little bit further, deeping a little bit further into prioritization after some feedback today, and then we'll also probably bring the goals next month also, and, and start talking about them a little bit more because we did reduce those. I just, we just didn't have all the detail that goes along with them. Um, I don't feel that a lot of the detail in the current plan is going to change, but some of it will. And so once we kind of have a prioritization strategy, and we can start refining some of the goals and some of the descriptions of the goals, then we can look at condensing these a little bit more, these ideas. I, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape with, with the ideas from both groups. It's kind of a lot of the things that we were anticipating from what we already know about the watershed and what a lot of our issues are. Um, but yes, we'll introduce prioritization today, get some feedback from you, bring it back next week, and kind of refine prioritization, and then talk about our goals. And I want to talk to Vanessa about whether we want to start putting some of the measurable tasks next month. It might be too much information to talk about in one meeting. But that's kind of the idea right now. That's the strategy right now. Just come back with you with those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Melissa, you wanted to go into prioritization then?
Sure. Um, so in the memo in the packet, I just wanted to
Hey, excuse me. Sorry, this is Jay Fredericks. I just wanted to let you know I joined a little bit ago, and unfortunately, we're on vacation. We're in like the mountains of New Hampshire, and I have really poor cell service, so I wasn't able to call in earlier, but I'm here and will be here as long as I can be, just to let you know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, and I see two more has joined us as well. Thank you. Bring me down. Um, okay, so if you had a chance to read through this memo, I first put in here kind of what are, what's in our current plan and how we decided to prioritize the current plan. So the first, the first thing we did is to look at these larger water resource outcomes. And the human health and safety aspect came directly from our county board, um, strategic plan that human health and safety kind of, um, should be one of the largest priorities. Um, the rest of the items came from the public input process and that feedback. And so we went through an exercise and had, um, our WPC, SWCD board, um, rank these. And then the next thing we did, if you could scroll, was to narrow it down a little bit more with looking at particular pollutants, because we had impairments back then. Um, and so how should we prioritize some of the pollutants that we have, um, in our, you know, impaired waters? And then to also further define which particular water bodies we should target and work on and prioritize in the plan. We developed a whole list of water body attributes, uh, and, and ranked those on, on how to do that. So if you keep scrolling, and then I just kind of put in some of the text that's already in the plan on what the thought was back at that time. Um, so if we could scroll down just a little bit further. Okay, so, oop, a little bit, okay. So our overall kind of priorities and strategies in our current plan was to, you know, the protection of human health and safety, uh, with, with respect to both, you know, protecting groundwater and exposure to toxics and bacteria, um, was kind of one of the top priorities. And then protection and prevention, we should focus on, you know, higher than restoration projects. And then soil health was really important because soil health really ultimately affects water quality and all those other, um, water resource outcomes is what we call them, that were on that list. Um, and what we heard back then was also to, to really, you know, with some available information is to just get started on implementation rather than waiting for, um, studies and more planning to get done. So the path we kind of took with this plan is to, um, if you could scroll a little bit more, Ryan. Yeah, thank you. So what we ended up doing is we picked water bodies that had a public access, because that public access really gave, um, that water body a more, uh, regional availability. Um, if it had a public access, we could actually get on the lake and do some work. Uh, but it also, uh, benefited a larger amount of people rather than just the people that live around the lake and have direct access from their shoreline. And then we, the streams that we really prioritize and focused on, um, had a lot to do with the fact that they had a TMDL study on them. Um, and we had a lot of support for Sand Creek and Credit River through other agencies. Uh, but the Sand Creek TMDL that we did was a very large endeavor. We knew that one of the biggest impairments we had with, um, Sand Creek was total suspended solids. And one of our subwatersheds was really some of the highest loading sediment to the Minnesota River, um, in the whole Twin Cities metropolitan area. So we took the priority of focusing on TSS reduction and, and ultimately phosphorus reduction, because phosphorus is bound to sediment. Um, the Blakely area ravines, because it's such a highly erodible area. Um, and then Credit River. Credit River had a TMDL. Um, it was delisted for turbidity, and we created a protection plan on Credit River. So we've been, we've been following this course of focusing on TSS. We have been focusing on bacteria, um, in different ways, um, through our, uh, technical assistance and cost share program, um, and through education and outreach, um, and making available water testing, um, for private landowners. Um, but really the focus has been on, uh, for the streams anyway, uh, sediment reduction and phosphorus reduction. Um, so during the phase one input process, we, in those virtual stakeholder meetings, we wanted to hear from stakeholders, you know, how do you think we should do prioritization in this next plan? And we got a lot of different, um, options and ideas, and I just kind of wanted to go through some of these, um, before we kind of get into what staff is thinking. Um, so the first idea was to prioritize by beneficial use. And beneficial use means, I know, um, it's a term used by the, um, Pollution Control Agency. It characterizes a water body, um, that beneficial use for aquatic life, aquatic recreation, and aquatic consumption. Um, they're very broad terms. Um, if something is um, impaired for aquatic life, it would mean that it has a macro or fish, um, index of biotic integrity, meaning it, it doesn't meet, um, what would, what you would expect to have for fish or for macro invertebrates in that water body. Uh, aquatic consumption, if it's impaired for aquatic consumption, and, and example would be, um, that water body has a mercury impairment, so it's a toxic. Um, so you wouldn't, you, there's a warning about um, consuming too much of a fish from that water body. Now, the DNR uses this, and these are the categories on the impaired waters list. And so, you know, the pros and cons to some of these, the pro to using this would be that it would be consistent uh, with the categories in the impaired waters list and what some of our water bodies are listed for, and consistent with the DNR, but we feel it's a really broad prioritization to, to try to do at the local level. Um, so this is something that staff, um, wouldn't suggest using as a prioritization. Uh, nearly barely, I know some organizations are using nearly barely, uh, which, which really means that it's, there are waters that are close to meeting standards, so they're either barely meeting the standards or nearly meeting the standards. Um, and we think that that's good for waters that might be close to meeting those standards, but staff talked about this, and we feel that Staff talked about this and we feel that our waters are either meeting the standards. Or they're not even close to the standards. So. We feel like this might not be a good fit for at least our area. Um, high value resource or habitat prioritizing by that. We think that the pros to this would be, you know, it's, it's good for waters that might be. Uh, oh, sorry. This is, uh, it's good for waters that, you know, for improving habitat. Um, it would work towards the goal of improving our IBI scores. Cause we have, you know, if you remember, we do have a lot of fish or macro invertebrate impairments in our streams. Um, it would also follow the preventive or protective goal, especially at the county board. The kind of the cons part of it, we feel that, you know, we would need to clearly define. What that high value resource habitat is for this. So we really don't have a definition for that. Um, and and we may have to, you know, we might have to merge. Uh, multiple state definitions. And some of our like high use lakes might not fall into this category. So this might be something. Uh, you know, a way to prioritize it would be better for our streams, we felt. We could look at prioritizing by total maximum daily load stressors. So when the PCA completes, um. Like this, this larger reps study that they're doing, it's a 10 year study. Um, that this is the first year that they're doing monitoring on it to update. The study for our area again. They list. In that report, stressors and there could be multiple stressors per stream or per reach. And so like the pro to using something like this would be, you know, using the stressors would help with. We thought the fish and macro invertebrate assessments that we have. And we could also use this for some targeting. Um, in certain areas. The only con that we could think of of to using this is that, you know, sometimes the stressor is a pollutant, so pollutants may be prioritized. Um, but that's what we're, that's what we're doing now. So. There is the idea of using Matt Council's priority waters list. Um, so that would align with, uh, Matt Council's 2050, um, water resources policy. Um, and some of these water bodies are already a priority water in our current plan. So what they have listed. For the Scott WMO for our priority waters are Cedar, Cleary, McMahon. And O'Dowd for the lakes. And they have Credit River and the Minnesota River listed as priority waters. So there are already waters that we have prioritized. Moving on to the watershed health assessment framework or WAP. Um, I, I am a little bit familiar with this. I know part of like Spring Lake Watershed District use this. Um, framework in their last plan update. Um, I was involved with some of that planning, or at least on the. Technical Advisory Committee team for that. Um. I think that. We might be able to use parts of this maybe for targeting. Um, I'm just not sure how up to date the data is, and I didn't really dig into this really extensively. But it looks like it would require a lot of GIS work. And I feel like we kind of already have a really good handle on. What our priority waters should be. So I'm not sure that this would. I'm not sure that using just this alone. Uh, would get us to where, you know, we want to be. Um, and lastly, what, you know, how we did our current plan is, um, really targeting by pollutant. So. Focusing on a particular pollutant. Um, with the goal of reducing that pollutant and hopefully, um, delisting some of our waters. You know, the cons to that, which we've learned over the years is that, you know, reducing pollutants takes time. Um, it takes education and it takes money. And it doesn't prioritize protection. It prioritizes more restoration. Um, I did ask this same question and and went over these options with the Technical Advisory Committee. On our, uh, May 12th meeting with them. And just to let you know, some of the feedback that they gave us was that. And I heard this from at least three people on that committee is that. Uh, you know, if, if you're showing improvements or improving trends, then they recommended that we stay the course. Of what we have been doing, um, you know. A lot of them are familiar with some of our work that, you know, they, they understand that we have momentum. You know, at least for sure with landowners and our technical assistance and cost share program. Uh, so they felt that we should stay the course. And so. What I'd like to, if I could share my screen, Ryan. I just want to show you a few. Things here, so. Um, I know we haven't shared this with you yet because we're still, uh, there's still a couple of sections that need to be. Uh, filled in by staff, but. One of the sections that I was able to complete. Uh, is some of our, you know, stream water quality trends. Um, I'm still working on finding the information for E. coli, but. As you can see, the green arrow means it's an improving trend. Matt Council did do a, um, an assessment. Um, kind of an update to, um, Credit River and Sand Creek. Um, looking at the data. Again, through 2021 and doing kind of a reassessment of the trends that they're seeing in in water quality. And as you can see. Sand Creek and Credit River have an improving trend for nitrogen. Total phosphorus, at least for Sand Creek and for total suspended solids. So this tells staff that what we've been doing is working. The only thing that I. Maybe changing is this arrow here, um, the recent. Um, Credit River data analysis that Barr just finished for us. In the report actually shows that, that chloride in Credit River is actually on an improving trend, is what they found. So. Um, so this might be changing. Um, so just want to show you, share a couple more things here. So again, just to. Remind you back from January, when we kind of went through all of this background data is that we do have multiple impairments. Um, many fish and macro invertebrate impairments, meaning they're not, we don't have the assemblages. And the different, um. Variety of species in our streams that. That would be expected, and we do have a lot of E. coli or bacteria impairments. But looking at these different streams. At least on the TMDL. Uh, that total maximum daily load study, it does then list what. Uh, the PCA in that whole technical team thinks are stressors for each stream. So let me. Okay, so this is what, um, Steph has talked about recently. So what we were thinking. Um, and this is what I would really like feedback from everyone on here today is. Just in general, we're not getting down to the nitty gritty details, but just in general, what staff was thinking is to go with kind of. Two different paths in this plan. We have non-impaired waters. And we have impaired waters. And for our non-impaired waters, we would take more of a protective or preventative approach. Um, which is preferred by our county board, and I grabbed one of the strategies out of their strategic plan. To kind of reinforce that. Um, but staff also thinks that there might be some restoration. That may be needed on non-impaired waters. But we would consider doing that if it was an action to help keep it off the impaired waters list. And for our impaired waters. You know, looking at all of our different options, um, staff does like the TMDL stressor idea. We also like the habitat or high value resource idea. Uh, but just to give you an example of what some stressors are, especially listed in the TMDL is. You know, these are all different kinds of stressors. And there's different ones for different streams, but just to give you an idea. Uh, you know, eutrophication is a stressor, which just means that there's either too many nutrients in it. Or it could be, um, a lot of algae or a plant shift. Or having influence from a lake or a wetland that might have high nutrients. And, you know, nitrates, you know, we, we know that tile drainage is a, is a. You know, a source of nitrates. We do have some cursed, um, topography in Scott County. Um, so all of these different things. You know, we're thinking about taking into consideration of prioritizing, um, for this next plan. And and we wouldn't have to use all of them. Maybe only some of them. Like altered hydrology and channelization. You know, with, with channelization, we know that, um, the Drainage Authority is. Or has abandoned some. Um, county ditches so far, um, whether, whether that continues or not, I, I don't know, but. Somewhere down the line in the future, you know, the next 10 years when the plan is adopted. Uh, maybe the altered hydrology. Um, could be addressed. If there was a ditch abandoned and, and. There was a opportunity to do like a re-meandering project. Um, on that stream. Um, so. At least with introducing this idea, I, I'm, I'd like to hear some feedback from. From commissioners and see what, what your thoughts are.
I'll go if nobody else wants to. Chime in. I'm having a hard time totally understanding prioritization. So before I kind of dive in. Can you kind of, are we, is this more, uh, exercise of prioritizing? I don't know, it like water bodies and which water bodies we want to focus our attention on. Or is it more like some of the things or like, you know, stressors? I'm, you know, are we trying to really prioritize water bodies or prioritize what type of practices we are going to implement? Within the watershed to improve water bodies? Which way do you most look at this?
I, well. That's a fair question. So I look at this kind of both ways. So in the. In the, um. In the current plan and in the memo that I talked about, you know, s- some of the water bodies that we currently work on. We would like to continue to work on. Um, that's kind of some of the feedback that we heard from the tack is to stay the course. And we are. Currently working with bar engineering on a couple of different studies. We're updating the Sand Creek. Total maximum daily load model. In that study that we used to, that we've been using for the last two plans to focus on. Improving Sand Creek. So that study is going on where Barr is updating the model, the swap model. And going to be updating scenarios so that we understand what would be some of the best practices. To help improve Sand Creek. We're also working on, uh, with Barr on updating the Cedar Lake Total Maximum Daily Load Model. So that we know, uh, what practices and and maybe some different strategies on how to continue working on Cedar Lake and improve water quality there. So. So it's kind of both. So, you know, for years, we've been working on the Sand Creek watershed and on Credit River. Uh, and all those small streams in the Sand Creek watershed. We now, we now have a lot of sub watershed assessments on those. Um, and so we know what, what targeted conservation practices we could work on. And that's more, we'll get into the implementation section plan to talk about all, all of that stuff, but. But I guess our focus is. You know, we heard that we should stay the course and keep working on these, these water bodies that we've been working on. Um, but we have to have more of a defined prioritization in this plan. And so I guess that's. That's where we are with this right now. Um.
Okay, so, so the water bodies is probably still like the, the main first goal. Is what water bodies and you kind of already have an idea of which ones are the priorities and have been the priorities. But still formalizing that and kind of just. Tying it to a process versus history and what people have just kind of prioritized in the past. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, well, to that end then, I, I do kind of think about this in two different ways. There's kind of like, there's the water bodies and specific watersheds. And then there's what you do WMO wide, right? So there's. Proactively, this is what we're going to be very proactive in with capital projects with seeking grant funding. To focus on the water bodies that we have said are the highest priority. In a way or in like, you know, in one, two, three, four, or in some kind of categorization, like priority one A. Or priority one is, you know, six water bodies, priority two is six water bodies, whatever. Um, and then separately, there's also the watershed wide, like what are we going to prioritize for soil health? That even if it's not in. One of those specific watersheds of a priority water body, there is still value. In providing funding or assistance to the SWCD for other practices. Throughout the entire WMO. So I kind of see those as two separate things. And I, I mean, I think it'd be cool to somehow reflect that in the plan too. It's just like. We'll have to come up with some good terminology for that, but it's, you know, it's priority water bodies. And then it's, what does the water body need? To improve water quality. And then it's watershed wide, what do we agree should be done watershed wide regardless of what watershed it is in. Those are kind of two ways that I see it. So when it comes to water bodies. I, I'm going back to what we did for the Lower Mississippi River WMO. And it was, you know, you gave all those different options of, you know, like beneficial use, nearly barely, high value resource habitat, TMDL. The Matt Council list. I guess what we did was kind of a mishmash of all those things. Um, but we also put a high value on public water bodies. Um, and that would, I would advocate that this. Um, commission should do that as well. And, you know, I guess. It doesn't mean that. You can't do, you know, improvements for private water bodies, but if you have to choose, you know, you might have similar size or scale water bodies. And one might have public access and one might not. So that would be one thing. And maybe, I don't know all the lakes, you know them better. So maybe we don't even really have that issue here in Scott County. Um. Cause most of them probably are public, but that would be something to consider if any of those major ones on the list. Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd, Thole, or Cleary, I suppose. Is Thole public?
Yes.
Yes, O'Dowd is, McMahon is. So we don't really have that issue, do you, do we?
No, the exception would be Nash Lake. We have over the years gotten calls from homeowners on Nash Lake, which is not a public lake. It's, it's a private lake.
Um, sure. So, so for that reason, maybe it is worthwhile to have that codified in the plan. That, you know, again, to. To have something for staff to fall back on and like, this is, this is why. We agreed through the planning process that resources go to public water bodies first. Um, and that we don't, you know, for private lakes, that's, that's not the focus. But we see that more as the private property owner's responsibility. So. Yeah, I would say then if, if there is one or two examples, it's worthwhile to have it in the plan. But we see that more as the private property owner's responsibility. So yeah, I would say then if if there is one or two examples, it's worthwhile to have it in the plan. Um. And then, yeah, I guess, you know, back to the W M O, Lower Mississippi River W M O Plan, you know, we talked about impaired water bodies. We basically broke it down to priority one A was lakes over, I think we just did ten acres. Um public water bodies, not public wetlands. Um if they were impaired, if they had degrading water quality, or if they're prioritized for protection by the P C A. Um and then priority one B would meet those same criteria, but they were lacking public access. And then we had priority two water bodies um that had public access. They may be. They may have been considered a public waters wetland, but they were still had some recreational value. Um maybe they were part of the fishing in the neighborhood lake, or they just had some other high ecosystem value. Um and so just putting some criteria to it, that's, you know, some kind of mishmash. It doesn't make sense to me to like just follow any one of those other options that you kind of laid out. I think it it's you as staff probably know best, what would that mishmash be that makes sense for the water bodies we have? Um that's defensible and yeah, just makes sense for our watershed, I guess. And um so again, that's, that would be my suggestion is, you know. And then also you kind of come up with that list and that prioritization. And then you might have the outliers where you think, okay, through meetings like this in the future, it's like, well, all right, that's the what the prioritization says. But this lake actually is used in this way. And this lake actually, it doesn't reflect it, but this is like a super high value fishing lake. That regionally, people come from all over to use that lake. And so it has higher recreational value than maybe otherwise says. So yeah, in my opinion, and and from what it sounds like you teased out of the surveys is that. Human health and safety, groundwater protection, soil health, surface water quality protection are kind of the main top things. Um I don't really know how to decipher the human health and safety one aside from like E. coli. As an issue in water bodies. Um and again, like groundwater protection, that's that's totally separate, I guess, in my mind. When we're when we're prioritizing the water bodies, we're talking lakes and streams. So groundwater and soil health are kind of not really relevant metrics. Um so yeah, I guess that's that's my thought process is like. Um this is what you have here, the prioritization discussion, I think. Um taking one step back before you get into the impaired and not impaired waters. It's, you know, what's the size of the lake? What does it have for recreational value? Is it public or not? Is it a wetland or a lake in its classification? And then get into, is it impaired or not impaired? Um. And then, yeah, again, then totally separate for prioritization, I have in my mind, how I can best make sense of this is like. What practices for soil health or projects um or erosion control? Regardless of where they are in the watershed, would those be worthwhile efforts for implementation?
So this is Jay, I guess, I like the way that that was laid out. But then I also would ask, is there a uh I don't know, a filter to put it through? To then say, where do we actually have the opportunity to, you know, impact? Because just because it's the highest priority, you know. I mean, world peace is the highest priority, but we probably can't, you know, impact that. I'm being facetious. But is there some sort of filter that says, okay, laid out like that was, which I liked a lot? But here's where we can actually affect change. Here's where we can actually have an impact, which may not strictly follow the priority. Order. Does that make sense?
Yep. Okay.
I think that makes sense too, Jay. And I would, I don't know what staff thinks. I would almost think that's like the next level of more detailed planning. When you get down to like the sub watershed assessment where you can really dial in that kind of stuff? Or do you think there's some kind of G I S analysis, Melissa, that you could do to try to tease out that? Like feasibility or potential for, you know, partner involvement or landowner involvement?
Well, one thing that does come to mind and that we talked about um in the current plan is that. Uh one of the reasons why we chose some of the lakes that we did choose to focus on is that. We do have partners on those lakes, like Cedar Lake. We have the Lake Improvement District that assesses themselves forty thousand dollars a year to help. Um implement lake management projects and then O'Dowd and Thole Lakes. Pay their share, pay fifty percent of the treatments that we do on the lake. Um Cleary can get funding from Three Rivers Parks District. Um it's just McMahon Lake that we haven't done a lot on because we don't have another financial partner for that. But um but that could change, you know.
It makes sense. I mean, that that sounds like that might kind of get at that and that could be mentioned in some kind of prioritization within the plan. That, yeah, the availability of partner funding and matching funding from local sources. That seems to make sense and that would make those higher priority.
So it sounds like it might be worth doing at the next meeting. Um the exercise that we did uh for the current plan on some of those water body attributes. Or do or would do you think that the staff should just come to you uh at the next meeting with kind of what our thoughts are on? On kind of narrowing down some prioritization? Because last time, if you scroll up. I don't know what I'm sharing anymore here.
Are you wanting me to share the packet again, Melissa?
Yeah, do you want to share them?
Yeah. All right, you tell me where to go.
Um so keep scrolling up a little bit to the water body attributes table. It, yeah, that one. So we actually went through an exercise to um. You know, get the W P C's input and the S W C D board's input on, you know, what should we consider? Um when looking at a water body to prioritize it in the plan, you know, what kind of attribute? And I mean, to be honest, ultimately, we didn't fully follow the ranking. Just because, you know, we did focus a little bit more on whether it had a public access. Because we needed to be able to get on the water body to um implement some kind of a a management um practice or improvement. Um. And then we did try to focus more on, does it have a citizen financial support or partnership um and help? And um so you can see whether it had a public asset access or not, kind of ranked to fourteenth on the list. Um. Even though the partnership ranked a little bit higher. Would you find it valuable to try to do this kind of ranking? Or do you think staff should just come to you with some ideas next month and then we can talk through it again and kind of try to narrow things down a little bit further?
So you're saying take those attributes in table, this is Commissioner Barton. Uh take those attributes in table three, three and put a number value to the lake. For each one of those to like compare Cedar versus O'Dowd with a final score? Or has that already been done?
So this is what we did for our current plan on how we were going to prioritize. Certain water bodies, whether they were lakes or streams. Um and we didn't rank each attribute against like Cedar Lake. We ranked it against. Another attribute. So it was an ordinal ranking.
Okay.
Exercise.
Okay, so so this is just telling us which attribute against other attributes is ranked to the highest, not at all. Towards which lakes, okay?
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I think it would be um. I feel like staff is probably going to know better.
Okay.
If if we were to try to put these attributes to the lakes and then score them somehow, I feel like staff would probably know better. And then some of them you can, I don't know, um. Yeah, I feel like it'd be interesting to see what you came up with and then we could respond to that, I guess.
Okay, yep, we can certainly do that.
And I think, you know, a bigger underlying question, too, is just, I don't want to do a versus, but like lakes versus streams. You know, generally, where do you put your time and energy? Um because, yeah, we do have a lot of streams and it's just a lot of surface area. And you could spend a lot of time, you could, you could just focus on Sand Creek for the next teen, ten years. And that would be a full workload for five people, you know?
Yeah.
So but is that the goal? Because the end, you know, the water resource of concern is Sand Creek, but also the Minnesota River. And I don't know, like, if if we prioritize recreation or um, you know, if human health is a concern. You know, do we have a whole lot of people recreating in Sand Creek, aside from the falls at Jordan? Um probably not. So then, you know, so I I don't know how to tease that out, but in my mind, there's still like an unknown. There's a question that hasn't been answered of like the lakes versus streams question about, not, I don't want to create a versus, but you got to choose where to spend your time. So which one is like more important? Um in terms of capital projects and focused attention versus, you know, if there's a, if there's a huge erosion problem. At Sand Creek, well, yeah, if if we got a willing landowner and somebody comes to us and we identify an issue, yep, you're always responsive and you do that. But um should we be seeking out projects to improve Sand Creek and erosion along Sand Creek? As capital projects or should we seek, be seeking out and studying projects to improve Cedar Lake as capital projects when you have to choose between those two? That's the question I'm in my head that I don't really know the answer to.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah, okay. Oh, that was great feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh this is Commissioner Phillips. Um just wanted to give my feedback here. I I like how this is wa- laid out. It seems to make sense to me. Um I would just uh advocate, uh I think it's mentioned by Commissioner Barton and others that, you know, staff, you kind of. Seems to know best on on these history of of um. Of of the prioritization and I I I would just support, support staff in that and I would just stay the course. Um I like the idea of if it's um. You know, if it's impaired versus not impaired, um so if that. Melissa, when you kind of summarize that, seem to make sense. If it was not impaired. Um continue the course. If it was impaired. Um, excuse me, if it was impaired. Um if it was not impaired, to go on preser- preservation mode. Um if it's impaired, to stay the course, I think that's how it was brought up. Anyways, I just wanted to support staff in that. I like how it's laid out and I would. I would uh kind of support that. Um one question I had, Melissa, I thought I heard. You mentioned chloride in the Credit River were improving. I just wanted to double check that. I thought that was true, but um just wanted to. But I'm not sure if I heard that wrong or not. Thank you.
Um yes, you did, Commissioner Phillips. Um and thank you for your feedback um from the. Water quality monitoring that was done in twenty twenty-three by your S W C D. That data analysis that I had bar do and the report that they gave me shows. Um an improving trend in chloride in Credit River.
Okay, so that that's a good thing because I think my understanding is most lake rivers and streams around the state are getting reversing chloride. So that's easy bucking the trend there a little bit, which is a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, it could be attributed to also that, you know, the city purchased a. Um. I can't remember exactly what it's called, but it it's a more of a precision um salting machine, if you will. Uh I forgot, um. So it it doesn't put down as much salt, but it's it's. Uh it's still effective in, you know, keeping the roads clear of ice. Um I just can't.
The city of Savage or city of Credit River?
Sorry, the city of Savage did that, sorry.
Oh, got it. Okay. That that that's a really positive change right there, so. That's really good to hear.
Yeah, to to help reduce their chloride impacts to the river.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Does anyone else have any input that we should consider for prioritization to bring to you next month or? Okay, well, thank you for the feedback. That was very helpful. Um we'll come back next month with something a little bit more refined for you to react to. And and we can have more discussion on that then.
Okay, uh thanks to Ryan and Melissa for all the new business um information. Appreciate it. Um next would be ongoing business, uh Scott County Soil Water District for Troy.
Ms. Chair, uh Commissioners, so Troy is not at the meeting uh here this evening. So we weren't going to go through his staff report. Um we were just going to basically stand for any questions. Uh if anyone has any, we can try to answer them and if we can't answer them, then we'd uh we'd take it to Troy. He's uh he's out of the, I think, country even um right now, so.
Okay, any questions on the the report for the staff? Um hearing none, I guess we will move forward on to program updates from Ryan.
Ms. Chair Commissioners, so I just brief updates here. Our capital improvement project, the ravine stabilization. Is largely uh done. Uh vegetation is coming in nicely. Uh shrubs were planted in uh May. Um the the subcontractor chose at that time the hottest uh week. If you remember, we had a a nice stretch in May where it was got pretty warm. Uh but luckily, a lot of the shrubs from going out there and and subsequent site visits, uh they are growing quite well. Um there is one thing that just popped up, so on the very upper end of the ravine. Uh the very most upstream end, there was an area where we had identified, it's called T R M. It seems to turf reinforced matting. Basically, there was a slough along the side of the channel. Um basically, the the side slopes leading down to the channel. And there was a previous project there. And it it um it hadn't really worked. And so we basically replaced that project with some T R M matting. Well, right next to where it was identified, it basically looked the same. It was this bold out area. And so we went ahead and actually um added that to the project. So basically doubled our T R M matting. And uh maybe it's a no good deed goes unpunished, but that's the area that. Uh there's a little bit of slopping. And so what happened is. Um the other T R M where we had originally planned for it, it had F E S lifts, fabric encapsulated lifts at the bottom. Basically stabilizing the toe. Well, the area next to it, we had added it, but we didn't add the F E S lifts at the toe. Um not necessarily thinking that that could be, I wouldn't say an issue, but just something that that we didn't, that think would pop up. But what it did is it basically shifted down um a couple of feet, maybe, maybe not even two feet, maybe about a foot. Basically that it just shifted. And so um we had money still available in our budget for S R F to kind of look at it. And they also had Gale Tech on retainer. And so I met with um one of their representatives on site. Uh last Friday and he's basically coming up with his recommendations and I did already talk to the. And he's basically coming up with his recommendations and I did already talk to the contractor, kind of made him aware of it. Um, so I, I, it's not any sort of major change. I think the original thought was maybe this is about five to ten thousand dollars worth of work, but. Where, you know, everything else turned out so nice that it's well worth the, uh, investment to make sure that this area. Uh, does not come unraveled and then leads to other, you know, potential issues, so. Um, with that being said, the project as a whole turned out really well, um, contractor did an excellent job. Uh, we just had this little bit touch up work and then, um. And then we've got our one-year vegetation maintenance and, and then that'll kind of wrap up the project, so. Um. So yeah, that's where that one's at and then last thing is our EPA grant that we had touched on, that, uh, Kasha project. Is coming to an end and so, um, we were putting together the final report for that. Uh, so the month of July, we'll kind of be pulling out everything together. Um, you know, it's a half million dollar grant and so there, there'll be a decent amount of work that goes into the final report that. You have to kind of outline all the different activities that we had in there and, and kind of give the results. Um, and do we hit everything that we said we were going to and I, I think generally speaking, we. We did across the board with everything, so, um, really good grant and MPA has been great to work with on that as well, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? If not, we will move on to program updates from Melissa.
Thank you, Commissioner, um. Few things here, so I've got several studies going, um, I had a check-in meeting with Amit from the University of Minnesota on the. Landowner survey that we repeated this year, um, to help inform the watershed plan. Um, he's working on that data analysis, he did show me some results. Um, from kind of the, the last few questions, I know one of them was, um. I wanted to hear from our residents, you know, how should we by, be prioritizing our plan? Um, I didn't put them in this packet yet because he's not done with all the results, so I, I will be bringing that to you once I have. Um, the results from all the questions from him, I'm hoping to have that by August. Um, we had a couple of different kickoff meetings for some studies, um. Uh, with, and so Megan Tosca, our Water Resources Engineer. Um, is going to be taking over management of these studies for me, my, my workload is just too heavy right now with the watershed plan update. But we kicked off with bar engineering for the Sand Creek TMDL model update and the scenario update project. Uh, the Cedar Lake Total Maximum Daily Load Model Update, um, which will then help, um. Rewrite the Cedar Lake Implementation Plan and inform the watershed plan of some projects that we could put in there. Um, both of those studies will be complete by the end of this year to help inform the plan. Um, BAR is currently working on, um, the Sand Creek Watershed Monitoring Data Analysis. Um, you know, that was a heavy load that you saw in the Anna report, so I don't expect to have results from them until probably later this year. But that data will help, also help inform the plan. And then we also had a kickoff meeting for the County Ditch Four Reimagining Study. Um, and again, Megan Tosca is going to, um, be taking over project management on that for me. Um, and Houston Engineering is who we're working with. And so that study is really, you know, CD four is, um, about a six mile portion of Credit River. And it's in the city of Credit River. And, um, Credit River is, we have a protection plan over Credit River and so this study is just kind of looking at, um. You know, there are some areas on Credit River that do have flooding issues, um, and what i- if. A big if CD four should be abandoned someday, you know, how could we reimagine Credit River? And help protect the water quality as the city of Credit River builds out. Um, so that's kind of what this study is about, is just helping us determine. Where some best management practices m- might be able to be placed. And what areas, you know, with, that do have flooding issues right now, you know, what? What could be done to help reduce those impacts? And overall protect credit river water quality, so. Um, so those projects are kicking off, um, that one is a two-year project, we won't have the final report for that one until, um. Sometime middle of next year, we did ask them for some kind of preliminary results by the end of this year to, to help inform the plan. Uh, for curly leaf pond weed management, um, I completed a post-treatment survey. On Cedar Lake on May twenty-second, so again, Cedar Lake, we've been doing for the last couple of years, whole lake treatments of an herbicide called Floradone. Um, which does a really good job of killing off the curly leaf. I did that post-treatment survey with the DNR, um, to check the effectiveness of the treatment. We did find some large, um, patches of curly leaf, um, they, they did look like they were affected. But they were kind of also actively growing, so I contacted our vendor who does, um, the treatments for us, that's PLM. And I heard back from PLM and C Pro. C Pro is the company that manufactures the herbicide, but they also have, um, a technical specialist that works with, um, PLM and the DNR. For their products. Um, and so C Pro actually asked if we could go out on the lake and so he could see them, so we did that. On May twenty-ninth, so, you know, a week after, um, he took some samples, he took photos and then he wrote a short report for me. Um, and he felt that curly leaf was gonna die off. Elisos patches within the next couple of days and they did. But it was helpful for, I forwarded that, um, short report to the lid. Um, because they were getting questions from residents around the lake and so they shared that on their, on their website, so that was helpful for them. Um, so for watershed management plan update stuff, um. So in March, we had the two meetings for measurable goals, uh, we worked on that data analysis. Um, we're still working on adding, uh. Little bit more data to the land and water resources inventory before we can share that with you, there's still a couple of sections that. Uh, definitely need some input from staff. We've updated the issue descriptions some more because we received separate comments from the Department of Health. And from the Board of Water and Soil Resources, on more information that they thought we should put in there. So they're getting a little long at this point, but there's, but, um. We, we did add the information, um. I had meetings with O'Dowd and Thole Lakes to, um, understand what they would like to see. In this next watershed plan to help their lakes, since they are, um. A partner that does, um, bring financing to the table. Uh, so I will try to incorporate what they're asking for, basically they would like to do. More management of aquatic plants on their lake, they have two invasive species. Uh, but they understand and, and we'll have to get into this discussion as well, do we continue with curly leaf pond weed treatments? In this next plan, um, we have it in this plan as something that we do manage because it does affect water quality. Uh, but that's, but that's a policy decision that we, we will, um, get to, especially for the implementation section of the plan. Um. I am, I've set up an, uh, a meeting for an open house, um, for Cedar Lake and the Lake Improvement District residents around the lake. That's on July first, it's a Tuesday evening and we're doing that at Cedar Lake Farm Regional Park. And it's really to discuss lake management options to help improve Cedar Lake. I'm doing this in advance of the TMDL model update being done. But, uh, really, we kind of know, um. We kind of already know what some options need to be, um, C Pro's been really good as a technical resource and then PLM with the. Multiple different lakes and, um, examples that they have and that they work on, they've been a really good resource too. So this open house, I've invited all the, the lake residents that are, um. That live in the, the district. And so it's really gonna be focused on lake management options, I have Moliere. I don't know if anyone hears, I've heard of Moliere, but they have a new technology, it's a nano bubble technology, um. That helps improve lakes. Uh, it also helps, um, get rid of muck on the bottom of the lake and it uses, um, oxygen. In tiny little nano bubbles, um, so they'll be there with, um, their display board, um. Describing kind of how that technology works and how it can help improve Cedar Lake. And then I'll have PLM and C Pro there with a, a different kind of strategy, um, to help improve the lakes, so. Anyone that's interested in hearing some of that information is welcome to attend, I can send you more information if you'd like, but we are starting. At about six o'clock at Cedar Lake Farm Regional Park for that. Um.
That would be great if you could send info on that, Melissa.
Sure, yep, absolutely. Um, and then just a last update on kind of the phase two for the plan update, so we did phase one last year. Phase two, as you remember, is more focused on reaching our underheard, underserved. Um, community in the county and I've been working really closely with Marcia Barcelletta O'Neil, our Community Outreach Coordinator on phase two. And we have some dates set up, um, this Wednesday evening, we are having a focused conversation with the, um, East African Women's Group. And that's at Cleary Lake Regional Park, that starts at six o'clock. Um, we'll have about an hour, we have about five questions for them. And I'm creating boards of each question and I've had that translated into Somali, so, um. So we'll have about an hour with them to, to have them give us input. And then Allison Adrian from Three Rivers Park District is gonna kind of lead them in, um, a, a yoga activity. Um, and then this group, um, meets, I think it's either once a month or every other Wednesday themselves, um. To talk about different things, so they'll, then they'll finish their, uh, meeting, but. We were happy that they're giving us some time to get their input. So this Wednesday, Cleary Lake Regional Park at six o'clock is when we're doing that. Uh, two more events, um, for the phase two, we are doing Sunday, July thirteenth. Um, Marcia has, um, talked to a church that's gonna allow us to. Um, have a focused conversation with the, their Hispanic, uh, community there, so after church, when the people come out. We will be outside the church with our boards and. Able to ask questions and Marcia will have everything translated for us. Um, so that'll be at two o'clock, there's a church in Shakopee, um, I can share that information if anybody's interested in attending. And then, so those two focused conversations and then one just general open house that's open to everyone. You know, uh, um. Kind of in that group or category, that's on Thursday, July twenty-fourth. And that one's from six to eight in the evening at McCall Pond Environmental Learning Center, um. And so we'll have flyers that we're gonna be passing out at different organizations in the county and, um, be giving some to the, um. Health and Human Services Department in Scott County too, for when they have clients come in, um, so. Those are, are the three planned events for the phase two portion of the plan. Um, so that we can make this plan a little bit more, um, equity focused. Um, and then the last thing is our. Um, can I just share one quick image? Um, the last thing is this image that we, um, had created last year. Um, it's on our website or homepage on our website of what does a Scott T M O do? I've had this translated into Somali and into Spanish and so we will have, um. You know, the correct board at each event, um, so that, that community can, can understand all the different things that we do. So. That's all I have for my updates, if anybody has any questions, I'm open to questions.
Any questions for Melissa?
Mr. Chair, uh, members of the commission, this is Commissioner Phillips. Um, Melissa, what was the, uh, uh, the event over at McCall Pond Yale, so you can you just repeat that, uh, the time? Place and the topic again, thanks.
Sure, no problem, yes, uh, McCall Pond Environmental Learning Center, so that's Thursday. July twenty-fourth from six to eight. And that's kind of the larger open house event that will invite, you know. All different groups to, to really target, you know, our underheard, um, underrepresented communities in Scott County. Um, so again, we've, um. Uh, we've created a flyer and Marcia is gonna be bringing them to the different organizations that she's familiar with in the county and then I'm gonna be bringing some to our. Scott County Human Health and Services Department for when, you know, their, their clientele come in, that maybe they can see the flyer if they're interested in. In coming and then we have about five questions that we're asking, um, at that phase two event. Um, just to help us, you know. Better, do better outreach and, you know, have more of an equitable plan this time, um, for everyone in Scott County. And, um, I can definitely send out a list of all these. You know, phase two events, um. And the flyers, if, you know, if everybody wants to. Maybe have the option to pop into them, you know, we can definitely send out a, an email. Of those.
Definitely won't come to all of them, but it'd be nice, yeah, if maybe somewhere in some people's backyards, it'd be nice to know, know where they are, if it's not too much work.
Yep, nope.
Yes, that's agreed.
Okay, any other questions? All right, uh, last would be the. W M O Administrator Report for Vanessa.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, Vanessa was, um, planning on sending me her updates by email and I, I think, um. She must have ran out of time, so I did not get anything from her, so she'll have to give her updates at the next meeting.
Okay, very good, I guess then the last, uh, thing would be for adjournment, we would need a motion to adjourn.
Barton, I'll make that motion.
Give me a second.
Commissioner Phillips.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, are you gonna do a roll or?
Yep, I'm gonna take a roll, uh, Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Commissioner Barton.
Hi.
Commissioner Fredericks.
Hi.
Commissioner Creer. Commissioner Creer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my mic got stuck, I.
Thank you, and Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
I think I've got everyone, right? And Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Hey, thank you, Commissioners.
Good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa and Ryan, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.